Okay, look at that. Ooh, look how bad, look how bad this looks guys, um. Hold on, forgive me. I have zero, oh no, oh, I just spilled coffee, okay, give me just- Stop, find the humor. Oh, my, my manifesting book, alright, give me just a second. Oh, yes, please introduce yourselves in the meantime. Oh, gosh, okay. Give me just a sec. Alrighty. Ah, I need a house. Okay, alright. Oh my gosh, alright. Okay. Alright, nice, thanks for sticking, uh, one viewer. Let me, uh, pour another pot of coffee, cuz you know, whatever. Welcome to the Coffee and Daydreaming stream. I'm Amy, thanks for sticking around with that chaotic meltdown, but, and then it's like, you know, I was like, a little hard on myself, like, well, am I having a negative reaction, it's like, yeah, you just spilled coffee, that's frustrating, it's okay to flip out, right? I'm pro flipping out as long as it doesn't hurt anybody. Yeah, like, you need to, like, be real and release it, right? Um, anyway, cheers, happy Valentine's Day. Okay, alright. Hold up, let me, oh god, look at this, look at the, ah, anyway. Okay, let me try to make that prettier. Okay, okay, whatever, that's fine, that works, forget perfection. Anyway, okay, now we're ready. My damn, my darn coffee, it was so good too, you know, it had the perfect amount of milk, honey. That's water under the bridge, or shall we say coffee under the bridge? We'll say coffee under my desk, that's all, water under the bridge, or coffee under the desk. Okay, only you one viewer knows our little inside joke, that's now our joke, okay? It's just coffee under the desk. Okay, anyway, anybody tuning in or watching the replay at, without watching the moment, uh, of the coffee spillage is like, dude, what is going on? Anyway, I'm so happy you're joining me. So, welcome to the special Valentine's Day stream. The heartbreaker, the heartbreak club, the heartbreak club. So, we're gonna do thirty minutes of self-love exercise while doing actual exercise. Squats, you know, you know, cuz this is about self-love. So, I'm ready to get my tush tightened, you know, we gotta get our tush tightened, everything tight and right, cuz this is all about us today, okay? Yes, what's up, viewer? So, here we got rose quartz, okay? Sending you love on this Valentine's Day. Cheers for you, for tuning in, okay? How beautiful it is that it's Valentine's Day and we're here giving ourselves love, okay? We're celebrating Valentine's Day for each other, okay? Okay, viewer that just tuned in, um, yeah, I hope you guys are ready for the Valentine's Day edition. Okay, heartbreak club, self-love exercises while doing squats, so go ahead, get some shoeboxes, I use, uh, Tupperware, um, to prop my desk up so I can do my squats, okay, while doing the exercises. Also, please give me a follow, uh, over here at Twitch. Um, you know, it's free, helps the algorithm, and check me out on YouTube at Coffee and Daydreaming. Yes. Oh, another Valentine, oh, hi Tommy, yes. Oh, adorable, can we all be each other's Valentine? I was so sad. Oh yay, we have three viewers, thank goodness, I got my rose quartz. Sending you guys love. Okay, cool, I'm pumped, we got another viewer. So, yeah, can we all be each other's Valentine? I was so sad today, I did not have a Valentine. And I'm, I'm at the point where I'm like, I just want my person, like, I wanna start a family, so like, not having a Valentine this particular year was hard. Oh, thank you for the follow, Mr. Ducks2, thank you. Um, yeah, so like, I was bumming out, and it's like, okay, you know, whenever I feel a negative emotion, whenever I feel a negative emotion, it's intel, it's data as to where I can redirect, redirect myself. So, um, the other year's everything, another, the other year's everything. Oh, I don't know what that means, what do you, whoa, we got six viewers, oh my gosh, okay, I'm so pumped. Um, so, let's all be each other's Valentine. Please give a follow, like Mr. Duck2, check me out on YouTube at Coffee and Daydreaming. Now, okay, so this is the Valentine's Broken Heart Edition, where we do self-love exercises while doing literal exercises, okay? So, I recommend getting a shoebox or a Tupperware container, prop your computer up, so you can do some exercises, be on your feet while doing it, alright, are you guys ready? Okay, so, and then after we do this, we will, um, go into a cowork space, okay? Yay, seven viewers, I'm so pumped, okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and pull up my timer. Wow, okay, cool, this is so dope, I'm so excited to have you guys here. Okay, would anybody like to introduce yourselves before we get started? Ape viewers, yes, okay, yes, alright. And if you didn't have a Valentine, you got a Valentine in me, okay? We're each other's Valentines, okay? Let's slip the creature. You, oh, hey, who knows, Up and Adam. I'm so pumped, Up and Adam is, uh, third night tuning in, so cheers, thank you, I value that. Alright, let's get into the work, you guys all set? Alright, let's do this, single time, same, same, I know this, Valentine's Day has been sad, but it's okay, this is where we're gonna work on that, okay? Let's, yes, make some popcorn, we're gonna do self-love exercise while doing self-love. So, thirty minutes are on the timer. Now, okay, so the first part of the exercises are like reflecting on our past, okay? Let me get my notebook, so go guys, really quick, go get a pen and a notebook, okay? Okay, here we go, yay, I'm so pumped you guys are here. And you know what, the day turned out fine, because I do have Valentine, you guys, and you guys have Valentine in me. Alright, so now, so, the first part, we're going to go back into our past, just to have that ah moment of like, ooh, okay? So, like, growing up, what kind of dynamic did your parents have? I'm gonna go with mine, hold on, okay. Oh, ooh, I just had a realization. So, gosh, I love my parents so much, however, they were really mean to each other, and as a kid, like, I would fantasize about happy couples, and I just always wanted that, but it wasn't possible in my childhood situation. So, now as an adult, I wanna provide that for myself, and I think I still have that limiting belief of like, it's not possible and it's not real, because I didn't see it. Okay, phew, jeez, wow. Oh wow, so that is a situational thing, and it's not true, because we all can have a healthy relationship? Ooh, wow, that one hit, man, oof, okay. Now, like, what kind of fighting style, I mean, and keep this to yourself, but like, you know, just for your own privacy, but like, what kind of fighting styles did your parents have? Or like, an adult figure, if you like, didn't have your traditional parents? Okay, fighting style, hmm. Hmm, wow. Okay, same here, over time, I just grew familiar, accepting, exactly, that's so funny, it's kinda like with me. And now as I'm older, my parents actually like, they're like that old married couple, they fight, but they kinda lo- love each other in a weird way. It's very absurd, and I, never in my life have I expected to see that. Mm-hmm, yeah, yep. Okay, so, now, let's see. Okay, what was your relationship with your parents as a kid? Um, was it like, do not, oh yeah, I forgot we're doing, um, squats, so I'm gonna be doing my little squat for my tush workout, you know? My little tush, we get younger and younger, we're like wine, guys, we're like wine. Um, dad would fight in the style of crane, mom. Oh wow, I actually, I never saw Crouching Tiger, Hidden Dragon, so I don't know the reference, but I'm kind of like, I kinda get it, just by the name of crane and snake, it's pretty visual terminology. Okay, guys, come on, go ahead and squat and think about, how did your parents treat you? What was your role as a kid? So, I was the youngest, and for fighting, hmm, I was the clown, ooh, I was the clown, because I just couldn't stand seeing my parents sad and mad. Oh gosh, I, yeah, is that wine? No, so, I know, I should not be drinking wine at eight-thirty at night, um, it is coffee, although, tonight, I should've, I should've bought myself a nice bottle of wine, yeah, that'd be fun, oh. Anyway, I do not condone drinking in any matter, but I, I like a little bit of wine, okay? Um, no, oh my goodness, Up and Adam, you missed in the beginning of the stream, I spilled my whole cup of coffee, it was quite entertaining, I highly recommend, if you need a laugh, you can refer to the beginning of the video after the stream ends, oh, gotta love it. I spilled coffee on my manifest book, and I'm like, is this a sign? No, I'm kidding, alright, 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 focus, 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 so, okay, so what was your role as a kid within your family? Okay, so like, I was a younger child, and I was a clown, so when tensions would be rough, I would be there, just acting like a weirdo, trying to make people laugh. And that parallels into my relationships, present day, it's a strength, but it's, it also hurts me in the sense of like, uh, I feel like I always have to be on so I could learn by having my own back. I know, right? Luckily, it only ruined a quarter of the book, not the whole book, gosh, anyway, okay, so moving along. Okay, so, growing up, like, do you see a pattern with, think about your first crush, okay? Do you see a pattern in, in today's, uh, relationships? For example, I definitely see a pattern, so I had a crush on, oh yeah, squatting, we got this. So, I saw a pattern, um, I had this crush on this boy, not gonna say his name, um, but like he, I just chased him, and I was only, from like, fifth grade? No, from fourth grade to, no, third grade to eighth grade, no, ninth grade. I really liked this kid, and like, he liked my friend, but I still chased him, I would like, walk by him, putting on lip gloss, trying to look cute. So, I see a pattern in that I am, like, I live for moments of contact, like, of looking cute, and like, ooh, hey, and it's like, as a third grader, I should've been living for moments of pure bliss, you know what I mean? So, I can learn today, live for moments of pure bliss, just be goofy, laugh, live in the moment and live in the present, like, I used to live, every crush I've, well, not every, but a good portion of my crushes, I noticed a pattern of me, like, getting a crush on somebody and just living for that moment of talking to them, and I had to look forward, like, if I was hanging out with somebody in like, five days, you bet I'd be online shopping for my outfit, going to Sephora, spending money I don't have on glitter eyeshadow to look cute in front of them, and it's like, that's external, okay, so like, all of that effort, it's out of my control essentially. It's to get validation from them, when it's like, oh, I can validate myself, but I do like dressing up, well, let's find reasons to dress up for ourselves, right? Um, okay, moving on. Okay, cool, so that was the first part, and now, let's go ahead and, okay, so, I want you to make on your notebook, okay? Draw a line, just like that, draw a line. Okay, on one side, I want you to write down any fear, any anxiety, any fear, anxiety, or insecurity that you, or belief that you currently have about love, okay? So, write that down right here, okay? Alright, so, um. Okay. Oh yes, do your squats while you think it's fun, I'm gonna be doing, um, a little bit of bar right here, so. Ooh, this one's hard, cuz like, you know when it comes up, but, let's see, hold on. I'm gonna do plie, oh, this one's good, little plie. Okay. 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 Oh my gosh, this is dark, alright, we're gonna have fun, we're having fun though, I know I'm having fun. Okay, so my, wait, before we start, okay, so then, we're going to, so your negative belief, you're gonna flip it and make it a positive, okay? So like, for example, I, one of my negative belief is, what if I'm unlovable? Okay, I'm so sad, oh my god, so pathetic, um, I'm gonna flip that into, I am lovable, um. I am lovable. Okay, you know, so what we're doing is, we're writing ourselves like personalized affirmations, okay? So, I am lovable, people, people love me for exactly who I am. Okay, um, another one was, I'll never find my true love. Okay, I'll flip down the positive is, I have so many true loves, no, that's not, that's not it, um. I have many true loves, oh, I like that, abundance, I have many true loves because men fall in love with me easily. Okay, ooh, okay, I'll never be understood, that's my negative thing, oh, sad, okay, make it a positive, um, flip it. I'll never be understood. I easily attract people who understand me, that's good. Okay, I'm negative, my, sorry, my things are so emo, they're so like, sad girl. I'm sad because it's hard to find a guy who gets me. Okay, it's kinda like the one above. I'm so happy, here's the opposite, and you hear how my sarcasm is coming out in my voice? No, like, the universe does not work on sarcasm, okay? So, so I gotta like, find the genuine truth, okay, well, anyway, um, so the negative, I'm sad because it's hard to find a guy who gets me, the opposite is, I'm delighted, what a great word, I'm delighted. Sounds like fancier than happy, happy's like, I'm happy, you know, like, just like, I'm happy, got my PBR, alright, anyway, PBR's good, I, anyway, let's focus. Um, I'm delighted at how, I'm delighted at how effortlessly I connect ooh, with people. Hmm, okay, okay, ooh, okay, so I took, I'm sad it's hard to find a guy that gets me, into, I'm delighted at how effortlessly I connect with people, I like that, yes. Um. Okay, negative, I'll never find a guy who takes care of me, opposite, I know, emo. Opposite, eh, eh, opposite is oh, I I always find. Negative is, um, I'm worried I'll never find somebody who has my best interest. Positive is, opposite, opposite. I'm so lucky, I attract people who have my back, hmm, and that already feels better. Like, I was feeling like so sad, and I'm like, oh shit, like, alright, I'm like, yeah. Okay, I totally forgot what I just said though, I'll have to rewatch. Hold on, no, I easily attract people who have my back. Good, genuine people, genuine, yeah, great word, who have my back. Okay, I easily attract genuine people who have my back, okay, okay, cool. Okay, so that is that. Okay, so now, I want you to eventually type up your positive affirmation, so you have them all in one central place, okay? Um. Okay, now. Okay, now, I want you to think about your person, what qualities do you want them to have? And this will be a good reminder, for example, like, I dated dudes that I'm just like, I don't know why, but I'm like, not feeling it, but I continue to date them because I'm confused and like, well, maybe I'll give them a chance, you know? Maybe I'll like, maybe it's me, you know, no. Sometimes we have values, and the person like, it's not being mean, it's just like, yo, this is your life person, maybe. They should have your values, you know what I mean, like, or you should have, both, you both should have each other's similar values, or like, you know, if you don't appreciate each other, how you're different in terms of values, okay? So like, right now, just write down what are, what's your ideal person, what qualities do they have, okay? what or what's your ideal person what qualities do they have okay okay do my squats yes okay cool so I got my little habits um and something I am looking in a partner okay hey new viewer okay alright moving on moving on okay so imagine well wait one moment okay so what I want what I want us to do now I think acceptance is really powerful in the sense of like everything like sometimes I regret my past um and my past choices but also that's not helpful you know what I mean because there's not a time machine we cannot go back and change it you know what I mean so like let's take a moment to thank everything in our life thank our past think the adult like the adults who raised us thanking them for showing us what we need what we want so thank you to my parents for showing me what I am looking for in my future partner thank you to my crushes that gave me breadcrumbs you thought I was feeling you no you thought I was feeling you um no but like with all seriousness thank you to all my crushes because I now call my energy back let's just call her energy back for a minute like I'm calling my energy back all the time like me as a little girl like running around putting on lip gloss while ask going to the bathroom five times to hopefully run into my crush in the hallway like I could have been in math class getting smarter you know what I mean so thank you crush because now that little girl is me as that age um I'm now giving her what she deserves I'm putting I'm calling my energy back and putting that in my career in my interests and things that make me happy outside of another person so goodbye thank you thank you thank you I'm now going to give that little girl me when I was at age the attention and respect to learn but chair but to chair it's hard because you're like well I don't wanna be too hard on myself but no like it's about time we get good and talented and we work on ourselves okay okay so thank you crush that thank you crush that I spent all this money on makeup at Sephora to feel pretty okay because I now have the power to tell myself like I'm hot and like giving myself that you know like confirmation like heck yeah like I don't need it from him I don't need it from anybody giving myself that the twenty-five-year-old running around a Sephora putting everything on my credit card cuz I couldn't afford you know putting on ruining my credit like buying being a consumer thank you thank you because I actually am aware I have everything I need okay and let's bring it to present day okay let's bring it to present day thank you thank you if they watch this stream I don't want them to know it I'm gonna do this one in silence wow that was so eye-opening I didn't know how eye-opening that would be that was awesome okay and lastly we're wrapping up on the Broken Heart Club Valentine's Day party session before we dive into our cowork session um is ooh okay I'm just now checking out the chat up and Adam thank you self for no longer chasing women and allowing them to ooh thank you longer allowing them to second guess who you are oh I love that I love that that is beautiful you know what's confusing okay I'm I'm gonna it's weird like I wonder cuz I'm like I was waiting for my crush to text me happy Valentine's Day he didn't so I'm like as a woman I'm like okay it's putting me in my masculine energy of chasing him it's interesting maybe there's no such thing as like masculine feminine energy right I don't know but I was like hoping he would I'm like he's a guy so like I wanted him to so it gets confusing it's like but at a certain point though even it should be reciprocated at a certain point so up and Adam I love how you said thank you self for no longer chasing and allowing them to second guess so yes like you so you trust you second guess yourself instead of having your own back at times yeah there's nothing wrong with you I go through the same thing I love that yeah there's nothing wrong with you I know it's like sometimes like for a dude like I'll dim my shine and it's like I'll dim my shine and worry like am I being annoying and it's like whoa 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 no 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 like I forgive myself for chasing I wasn't annoying they just weren't my person I was perfect there's nothing wrong you know um hold on ooh thank you self for discovering embracing hmm oh wait wouldn't give you time hmm frustrated yeah I know that feeling I know that feeling very well thank you self for not simping wait a minute I was just thinking how like I wish more people simped I really do I love it it's weird cuz like I saw on TikTok everybody's like don't be a simp and I'm like I wish a dude would simp over me like yeah you know what I love that up and Adam but I will say let's let's be a simp it's cool if you find the mutual person I think that's key like if like as humans can find their mutual person to simp over then I think simping is cute like I want I want my crush to simp over me you know um but I like that forgiven self I'm a simp I or I I don't know if I'm saying it right but yeah I was a simp and I was like I was just like if only my crush was equally a a simp for me anyway from a man to a woman I'd advise who were or are insane as I was to just move on yeah thank you thank you I've beaten myself up in the past saying to myself all the time effort yeah now I see that ooh that and that's part of the acceptance we were talking about I love love that so true yeah keep that energy for ourselves okay here's our rose quartz I'm installing loving energy for ourselves we fulfill our own needs we make sure our needs are taken care of okay cool oh I love that yes don't worry the sims are bound haha thank you oh my goodness well likewise up and Adam um yes you you I will find my simp my crush who sims equal and you will find your crush who sims equal cuz that little butterfly I just love it okay guys we're gonna wrap up the Broken Heart Club and now let's rephrase it instead of Broken Heart Club whole heart club now it doesn't sound cool though I like Broken Heart Club cuz it sound like Sergeant Pepper's Lonely Hearts Club fulfilled club sounds weird like we're on a Lifetime movie um was it edgy but like it means fulfilled I don't know we'll think about it um okay now I want you to imagine that you have your person okay in ten years uh where would you like to be in ten years okay with your person okay now what about five years three years okay cool um so now what I actually would like you to do before you lose them you know the affirmations we wrote down by taking our fear and anxiety and flipping into the opposite before you lose it I want you to go ahead and take the time to type it up um in like a word document okay so I'll set the timer um oh wait let me uh lady simp yes absolutely up and Adam one woman oh yeah and wouldn't mind simping for for yes exactly like i- it's mutual simp of human beings who are still defended by the oh oops sorry I'm squatting gotta get that squat on the floor oh my goodness where are you meeting these people at the dance floor I feel like dudes at dance clubs and like bars I don't know it gets a little it's little I don't know like I stick to the apps cuz you can kinda meet somebody outside of a bar and being drunk you know so I think it's the wrong place maybe I don't know but maybe the apps they're definitely the wrong place let me see being social media who workout the gym okay 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 safe yeah I work out at home too mainly cuz I like to workout barefoot okay it's good to observe to be an observer so okay um oh yeah so let's take let's take two minutes really quick to go ahead hold on I'm gonna put my microphone I don't know if you guys like keyboard typing but I know I do the sound is so relaxing okay wait let me pull up do my squats alright so setting the two-minute timer now to rewrite your affirmations Okay, so I'm gonna just put one more minute on the clock just to wrap up here. Hold on. Where is that? Okay. Okay. Wow, that was so yummy. Um, what's cool is that like the more I typed out my affirmations, the more I kind of like impromptu affirmations. I thought of like more. I was like, oh, what about this and this? So now we have those affirmations. So you know, it's nice and kinda soothing to read that out loud. Empressive. With with your light, oh wait, I'd advise move on if they don't acknowledge you and give you the attention. Thank you. That is good advice. Cuz a part of me, sometimes I'm like, oh, is the guy just shy? You know, and I would hate to be 80 years old, like in the notebook on my deathbed, like 89. Let's go, let's go 99. I think 99 is a good age. And just be like, wow, if only we told each other how we felt. You know, that was like my biggest fear, but you're right. Like, yeah. Um, hmm hmm hmm, typing. Wait, okay. What was yummy? The, um, the affirmation. So like, as I was writing the customized affirmations for myself, I started thinking of more affirmations that really resonated with me. So, um, so yeah, so that is a wrap to our Valentine's Day portion of the, what did I call it? Lonely Hearts Club? Um, but no, we're no longer lonely. Um, that was so therapeutic and eye opening. The exercises we did, and if you're just joining us now, feel free after the stream ends, the replay will be on, uh, that you can check out. Okay. I highly recommend it. Be the shy one approaching. Hmm. But at the end of the day, you will approach. You will approach her, right? Cuz that's the confusing part. Like, yeah, like is a dude just shy or is he not into you, you know? But my attitude now is like, if he's single and he's available, you might as well just tell him how you feel, right? Tell your person. Ah, my nose itches. Okay, alright. Alright guys, it is getting late. Let's save time for our cowork space. Okay. Um, uh, she gonna approach me. Inter- oh, this is interesting. Oh my goodness. Oh my goodness. Okay, I love hearing. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, this, I'm a little confused now. So my crush, I took it that he wasn't into me because he didn't reach out to me? And I initiated the last conversation? So it gets confusing. He does respond back, but at the same time, I'm like, well, if I'm initiating every conversation, does he, is he actually into me? So, hmm. Yeah, interesting. Okay, I think the lesson learned is if you want to, uh, flirt and they're single and available and reach out to your person, let's do it, right? Okay, alright, yeah, forget gender norms and all that. Although I will say it'd be nice if like, uh, personally. I guess I take it if the dude doesn't like text. Um, and I'm the last one that he's not into me. Maybe that's old fashioned. I don't know. So perhaps, I don't know, but then I don't wanna be aggressive. I'm an Aries fire sign. So I can come off a little like, like I get, you know, I get what I want, you know what I mean? If I, if I want something, I'll, I go get it, but then it's like, I don't know, with the dude, I, I want him to come to me. I just, I like that. It feels dainty. I wanna feel dainty. Anyway, alright, guys, it is time to co-work. It is co-work time, guys. Okay, alright. You guys ready? I'm gonna leave my desk up. Alright, so I'm gonna put the 40 minute timer. New viewer, if you're just joining, feel, please follow, please follow me and follow me on YouTube at Coffee and Daydreaming. That'd be a big help and it's free. Um, so 40 minute cowork, I set a timer, we get our work done, we go in a deep focus and then I set a fi- five minute timer and we just kind of relax. Now I am a little low energy right now. So let's aim for 40 minutes and then we'll touch base if we'll do another 40 minute session after. But for now, we're gonna do one 40 minute session. Okay? Oh, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Oh, thank you. Yeah, I appreciate that. Oh, you solid. Thank you. Um, a little bit. I'd like to get into the fancy video editing, but one thing at a time. With having like a day job, it does make it a little, um, exhausting, um, trying to do everything. Editing takes time. I do love it though. Like I genuinely have a blast, um, doing it and I love making videos. Okay, alright, you guys ready? I'm setting the timer. I'm setting, setting the timer. On your mark, get set. Go. 40 minutes on the clock. Let's go. Sorry. I highly recommend you guys prop your computer on, prop your computer on some shoeboxes or Tupperware. And you know, it's Valentine's Day. I'm getting it, you know, get my body re- ready, you know, instead of like sadly, well, I will be sadly eating potato chips and watching you. No, you know what? I started watching The Rest of You yesterday and I was like, this is sick. I gotta get this off. And I started watching that Reese Witherspoon Ash and Kucher thing. I said, I tell you, I was like, okay, I feel so much more comfortable and safe now. Um, so I will be finishing that movie after and eating chips. So no shame for uh sadly eating potato chips. Embrace it. It's fun. But my point is, I could have been sad girl all day. And it's like, sending love. Today's about self-love. High five viewers. Please follow and subscribe. Check me out on YouTube too, at Coffee and Daydreaming. I'm excited to have you guys here. And I don't want to be a distraction, so we're currently in a deep focus uh state. Okay, guys, so we have a little over twelve minutes left. We have just a little over twelve minutes left, so I'm gonna go blast my music, dance like a weirdo and get my work done. I've been pretty productive so far, so woo, okay, cheers. All right, let's get work done. Yay. Go ahead and give a, give a follow if you can, guys, new viewers. And shout out to Dylan for joining. Shout out to Up and Adam. Like, you guys are awesome. Cheers. All right, okay, here we go. Just saw your chat. Um, what was it? I don't know, some playlist. I'm listening to that like Miss You. Um, what playlist am I listening to? I'll find it. Hold on. Let me see. It's good. It's upbeat. I like upbeat. Playlist. I don't know. By the way, shout out to the new viewers. Thanks for checking us out. So we are, we have twenty, a little over twenty-one minutes left of our digital cowork deep focus. So go ahead, open up a notebook and get some work done. Also, please follow and check, uh, check me out on YouTube too. Coffee and Daydreaming. Yay. Okay, cheers to productivity, guys. I highly recommend you guys prop your computer on, prop your computer on some shoeboxes or Tupperware. And you know, it's Valentine's Day. I'm getting it, you know, get my body re- ready, you know, instead of like sadly, well, I will be sadly eating potato chips and watching you. No, you know what? I started watching The Rest of You yesterday and I was like, this is sick. I gotta get this off. And I started watching that Reese Witherspoon Ash and Kucher thing. I said, I tell you, I was like, okay, I feel so much more comfortable and safe now. Um, so I will be finishing that movie after and eating chips. So no shame for uh sadly eating potato chips. Embrace it. It's fun. But my point is, I could have been sad girl all day. And it's like, sending love. Today's about self-love. High five viewers. Please follow and subscribe. Check me out on YouTube too, at Coffee and Daydreaming. I'm excited to have you guys here. And I don't want to be a distraction, so we're currently in a deep focus uh state. Okay, guys, so we have a little over twelve minutes left. We have just a little over twelve minutes left, so I'm gonna go blast my music, dance like a weirdo and get my work done. I've been pretty productive so far, so woo, okay, cheers. All right, let's get work done. Yay. Go ahead and give a, give a follow if you can, guys, new viewers. And shout out to Dylan for joining. Shout out to Up and Adam. Like, you guys are awesome. Cheers. All right, okay, here we go. I started watching the rest of you yesterday and I was like, this is sick. I gotta get this off. And I started watching that Reese Witherspoon Ash and Kuchar thing. I said, I tell you, I was like, okay, I feel so much more comfortable and safe now. Um, so I will be finishing that movie after and eating chips. So no shame for uh sadly eating potato chips. Embrace it. It's fun. But my point is, I could have been sad girl all day. And it's like, sending love. Today's about self-love. High five viewers. Please follow and subscribe. Check me out on YouTube too at Coffee and Daydreaming. I'm excited to have you guys here and I don't want to be a distraction. So we're currently in a deep focus uh state. Okay guys, so we have a little over 12 minutes left. We have just a little over 12 minutes left. So I'm gonna go blast my music, dance like a weirdo and get my work done. I've been pretty productive so far. So, ooh, okay. Cheers. Alright, let's get work done. Yay. Go ahead and give a, give a follow if you can guys, new viewers. And shout out to Dylan for joining. Shout out to Up and Adam. Like, you guys are awesome. Cheers. Alright, okay, here we go. I need more water. I'll be right back. I'm back. I'm switching from my coffee to chamomile tea. I think I had a little too much coffee after 8pm. Oops. Okay, alright, back to the focus. Little over 10 minutes left. Let's go. You guys are so focused. Ah, same. Alright, so we are each other's Valentine, okay? All of us, all four viewers, we're each other's Valentines. Um, in a, you know, platonic way, of course. But um, yeah, I'm single too. It's very sad. I was so sad today. But, oh, I got over it because Up and Adam can vouch, um, we did this awesome exercise and now I have more clarity. Um, yeah. I know. Um, but Dylan, I highly recommend, I think the video will be posted when the stream ends, but go ahead and do the exercises that we did. Because for me, they were really eye-opening and I, so now I have this information, but now I just have to practice it. Because like, isn't one thing to know it, it's another thing to practice it. So like, you know, let's practice it. Um, so you're not alone Dylan. Ah, well, this year is ju- for us to learn about ourselves, value our feelings and take care of what we need to do. So F external circumstances. It's all about the internal. So cheers. Okay, so we have a little more than six minutes left. Here we go. Alright guys, that is the timer. Okay, I'm setting five minute timer now. Okay, hey Emmanuel, thank you. Give a follow for that. Thank you. You like the dance. I appreciate it. It's called the productivity dance. You know, I put on Fallout Boy came on on my Spotify. Can't help but like, you gotta dance when Fallout Boy comes on. Uh, but yeah, the five viewers, thanks for tuning in. Please go ahead and give a follow. It's free. Help a lady out. It's Valentine's Day. Help a lady out. Anyway, um, oh, someone just left. They were like, this girl's desperate. They were like, get, get me out of here. Um, anyway, we're here and we're having an awesome time. Um, yeah. Oh my goodness. Hi Emmanuel, how was your Valentine's Day? Um, anyway, so for those of you jo- just joining, we just wrapped a 40 minute deep work co-work space. So now we are in a five minute rest play. Uh, break. We're in a break. So go scroll, binge scroll like as much as you want on your phone. Um, let's go ahead actually and relax our eyes. Do a 2020 exercise. Okay, so like something 20 feet away for 20 seconds. Okay. So let's rest our little eyes, our poor little eyes. They, they, no, not poor, that is lacking. Our rich, wonderful eyes. They do so much for us. Let's give a shout out to our eyes. Thank you guys for helping us see the beauty in the world. Colors, Twitch chat, a Twitch stream, right? Right? Um, okay. You guys got your uh, what are, what's your, your productivity juice? Mine right now, I had to switch from coffee to chamomile tea. I was going a little off the wa- off the rails a little bit with the coffee after 8pm. Whoops. Um, but yeah, this is Kava. Ooh, you guys wanna hear what my little secret tea? Not secret, my tea fortune is? Okay, it's yogi. Here we go. Ugh, turmoil please, please give me good. Okay. Serve all in truth, in compassion and in grace. Grace, wait. Serve all in truth, in compassion and with grace. Okay, I need to process that. I don't know what that means. Okay, let me read that again. Ah, geez, how about they could be a little more graceful with um, how they wrote it? I feel like some of these like teabag things, they try to like be so poetic and it's like, dude, what are you talking about? Alright. Serve all in truth, in compassion and in grace. Maybe tell the truth, be authentic, but with grace and gentleness? That's how I'm gonna interpret it. That works. Alright, like, uh, this writer should be fired. Alright, no, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. I'm being salty. Yay, seven viewers, welcome. Oh, thank you for the follow, PoolGod07 or 07. Ah, I appreciate it. Happy Valentine's Day. If you guys are without a Valentine, I'll be your Valentine. Okay? Yeah, we're each other's Valentine. And if you missed the um, self-care exercises after the stream ends, um, feel free to watch the replay. Because I tell you, it was very, very um, like moving. I had some weird epiphanies. Not weird, I had some great epiphanies about how I can funnel my external need for love into internal need for love. So that was pretty eye-opening. I was like, wow. So, um, yeah, I highly recommend it. Anyway. Okay, we are coming to a close on the break. You guys wanna do another 40 minute deep session? I think so. Yeah, we'll do one more 40 minute deep session and then call it a wrap. Is that good? Okay, cool. Alright, let's do it. Alright, the timer of the break is done. So I'm gonna go ahead and set 40 minutes. Okay. Forty minutes on the clock. On your mark, get set. Go! Okay, alright guys, let's get work done. Get work done. You guys are so focused, so productive. You get things done easily and effortlessly. You guys are so amazing. People come to you because they trust that you can get it done. Like, you know how to get it done. You know how to get it done. You get things done. Okay. Here we go. You guys are awesome. Oh yeah, also it's encouraged to go ahead, throw your laptop on a shoebox or a Tupperware thing and dance. You know, that's what I'm doing. It's Valentine's Day. I had to dance away that my sadness and it actually helped. So, um, I was listening to like emo sad music, but now I'm listening to emo happy music. I got Fallout Boy. Um, yeah, anyway, alright, get to work. I know, right? This is a fun song to get you in the mood. Well, we have a little over seventeen minutes, guys, left. Oh, I love simps. I, I'm encouraging all simps. Okay, cuz I'm a simp for you guys. I'm a simp for hanging with you guys. I'm so pumped. Right? Uh, no shame in sharing. Alright guys, let's focus. Seventeen minutes left. I, uh, said it for forty minutes. So yeah, I guess like a little over twenty minutes passed. Um, but yeah, we got this. Focus. I'll write in the chat. Oh, yay! I'm so flattered, Dylan. Thank you so much. Oh my goodness. Well, I am so happy to have you here and I'm pumped to have you. New followers, new viewers, welcome. We have a little over fifteen minutes left of our deep focus space. Energy, um, it is Liquid Death. I like Liquid Death. It's good. Oh, well, this is cool, guys. I love that you guys are coming back. I'm flattered. And we're friends now officially cuz we're Valentines, right? Yeah, sparkling energy water. Or, no, actually, it's not an energy drink, but I made the mistake of having coffee at eight thirty tonight. Yeah, I always say like, don't ever do that again to myself. I'm like, yeah, don't ever have coffee that late. But I did it. I love me my coffee. Whoops. Okay, it's all good. So, yeah, my Liquid Death. Twitch friends. Okay, guys, so we have a little over fourteen minutes left. Okay, I'm gonna go back to focusing. I'm trying to find flights to visit my parents and they're so expensive. Okay. No, no money, no lack, stress. It's okay. Uh, I try too hard sometimes to think positive. Alright, money is flowing our way. I'll find the perfect flight. Okay, here we go. Yes. Yes. Flow to us, money. Money's coming our way. New viewers who just joined us, we have a little over thirteen minutes left of the deep focus space, so pull up a notebook and get work done. And a fan. Yeah, it's coming to us, guys. Yeah, we got it. Do you guys know how to get like cheap flights? Any tips? Cuz like, it's so expensive. I don't know. I'll keep looking. Did Orbit? I don't know. Professor, I know. Yeah, tried it, but maybe a magical flight will come my way. That is true. I'll try Expedia. I tried Orbit, but let me try Expedia. That's a good call. I'll try Google again. Thank you, guys. You know, yes. Oh my goodness. I hope there's like a new airline coming out, like a cool airline, right? That's like reasonable. I don't know. Anyway, eleven minutes left. Let's focus. We got it. That's a good idea. I'll check out Southwest. Okay, that's a good idea. Priceline. Okay, so I'm trying Expedia, Southwest Priceline on it. Alright, guys, let's focus. I'm checking those out. Part LAX or? Hmm. Two minutes left. Hey, Esomen. Wait, hold on. I'm gonna read. Wait, ooh, sorry. Let's see. Uh, Esomen, feel free to follow. Be great to have you doing well. Thank you. Um, hold on, let me scroll up. Okay, try Southwest. Hmm, oh, the cheapest, yeah. First class, maybe one day, one day. Manifesting first class for all of us, guys. Oh, that's not bad, Dylan. One hour is a good time. Same. Up and Adam, I know. I'm like, I'm stressed cuz I'm like, ooh, it's not looking feasible. I can try. AC Valhalla. Is that like a Transformers reference? I don't know. I have to Google that. We've a minute left, everybody. Ah, okay, it's a video game. I see. That's cool. I see. Very cool. Alright. Ooh, and that is time. Okay, excellent. Alright, guys, that is the time. Alright, one hour flight. Yeah, yeah, I know. I don't fly before eight thirty AM. I promised myself. I was like, mm-mm. It's just not worth it, but it sounds like it's worth it. It'll be worth it. Yeah, just go to bed early so you can wake up early. So, alright, guys, well, that's been a blast. Happy Valentine's Day, everybody. Thank you for being my Valentine. Some rose quartz over here. Hmm, sending us love, unconditional love, sending us people who value us, people who respect us, sending us people who love us for us, and sending us people who see our uniqueness as beauty and they love it. Yeah, we're attracting amazing people in our lives. So, yeah, thank you, everybody, for streaming. If you haven't followed, please do. It's free. I appreciate it. And shout out to the OG, the OG, um, Up and Adam and Dylan. Thank you, guys, for hanging out as well. So, alright, guys, I'm gonna get off, but Happy Valentine's Day, everybody. You're amazing. Bye, guys. Goodness, hold on.